Welcome to the regular meeting, Morganton City Council, December 4th. I'll ask where you stand, as Forrest Fleming will lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. I'd like to ask Pastor Jerry Gamble, Mount Home Baptist Church, to please come forward and lead us in an invocation, please.
Would you pray with me? Eternal God, our heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks for the preservation of our lives to this hour. We're reminded of the manifold blessings that you have bestowed upon us even this day. And we also know that we live, we move, we have our being in you. And so we thank you for all that you have done for us, not only today, but all the days of our lives here on this earth. Father, we're thankful that we can come here tonight to this meeting. Thank you for the opportunity of living in America and being a part of this nation. We're especially grateful, Lord, to live here in Morganton. We thank you, Father, for those who lead us so faithfully from day to day. We invoke your blessings upon the mayor, council members, all of those who are in authority. And I would pray, heavenly Father, that you might guide in all of the deliberations that will take place here this night. Father, we know that we are in a special season of the year. We're thankful for this Advent season. And Father, I pray that we might remember that Christ is the reason for the season, and that in all that we do in these coming days, that we might honor and glorify you. Again, we invoke your blessings on this meeting, and I pray, Father, that you would guide again and direct in all that's said and done, for we ask and make our prayers in our wonderful Savior's name. Amen.
Pastor Gamble, thank you so much for being with us. This time, we're going to swear in our new council members. Wendy, I'm going to ask you if you'll go first, please. And Judge Bob Irvin will do the swearing in, please.
He wants back here. All right, you've got the Bible here. All right, I gather you're going to hold the Bible for us. So if you'll turn around.
Place me in, uh-huh.
If you'll place your left hand, if you can raise it up. There we go. Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. Repeat after me, and when I say aye, if you'll give your full name. Aye.
Wendy Hodge-Kato.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain.
And maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As councilwoman.
As councilwoman.
Of the city of Morganton.
Of the city of Morganton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, and thank you for being with us. All right, well, let the photographer do the arranging here. I'll do that. There we go. All right, if you'll put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. Aye.
Aye, Christopher Brian Hawkins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain.
And maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of North Carolina.
Of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As councilman.
As councilman.
Of the city of Morganton.
Of the city of Morganton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, and.
Thank you.
Okay, comments from our newly elected, Wendy? Would you like to make any comments, please?
Well, I just want to thank all of the individuals and groups that supported me during the election time, and I'm honored to serve you, not only as a citizen of Morganton, but also for a woman, a woman in Morganton. We haven't had a woman on the council since 1986, I believe, so I'm really happy to be here. As I ran, I'm a communicator. If you have something that you need to say, please contact me. The website's still open, and my email's still open. Again, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity.
Chris, would you like to make a comment?
Sure. As Wendy mentioned, I'd like to thank all those who supported me as well. The confidence you've shown in me and your support has been overwhelming and very, very humbling. A very special thank you to my friends and family who are in attendance tonight. Thank you for making this night even more special. And I'm very thankful that my mom and dad are able to be here tonight as well. Among the many life lessons they've taught me are to treat other people the way I want to be treated, to always be fair and honest, and always do my very best. And I promise the citizens of Morganton that I will continue applying these principles as I serve you on the city council. Thank you.
Our first order of business is to elect a mayor pro temp. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Forrest Fleming.
We have a nomination of Forrest Fleming. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any other nominations? If not, all those in favor of Forrest Fleming as mayor pro temp, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next, on our agenda is to set our meeting dates and time. Normally, we meet this 6:00 PM on the first Monday of each month excluding July. Do I have such a motion?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Take it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, appointment of standing committees by the mayor. For finance, I'm going to appoint Sidney and myself for personnel. Sidney and Forrest Fleming for our streets. Chris Hawkins and Wendy Kato. And on utilities, Forrest Fleming and Chris Hawkins. Those are, will be our standing committees for this year. Next, to introduce the council. To my far right, Wendy Kato, councilwoman, Forrest Fleming, now mayor pro temp. Louie Vina, our city attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, the mayor. To my left, Sally Sandy, our city manager. Sidney Simmons, councilman. Chris Hawkins, councilman. Kelly Russell, our recording secretary. And Becky Brinkley is our interpreter for the deaf. We have one service pin tonight to present Marvin Evans with the Recreation Department, who's been a maintenance worker for 25 years. If Marvin will approach the microphone along with Becky Brinkley, our interpreter. Going to ask Mayor Pro Temp Fleming to make that presentation.
Congratulations, and I wish you the best, and hopefully I'll be seeing you again in another 25 years. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Marvin, would you like to say something?
Okay, I want to thank you for being here and working for the city of Morganton. It's been a pleasure to work with the people. And my boss, Rob Whistler, that we worked together and had a good relationship, and I enjoy these 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another service pin for Gary Massey, who's a public safety lieutenant for 25 years. Gary could not be with us, but that will be presented later. Under our public advocacy and issues, we have a presentation by Anthony Starr, executive director from Western Piedmont Community Council of Governments, concerning the regional comprehensive economic development strategy, or SEDs as we call it. Anthony, thank you for being here.
Thank you, mayor and council, for the opportunity to come, give you a brief overview of this report and study. And I thank you for Morganton's support of the council of governments. We have a fantastic partnership with you. You have very capable staff and great leadership, and we don't take that support for granted, and we appreciate that partnership. So why are we here? Why are we talking about? The council of governments, or the COG as I may refer to it, is a economic development district as designated by the U.S. Economic Development Administration. And we're required to implement a SEDs every five years, and so that is why we are here tonight. We, a couple of months ago, our board updated this plan, and so I'm here to give you a few points about it. And I'll just raise this point, is that the COG is just one agency involved in the implementation of the SEDs. It's intended to be implemented through all of our partners, whether that's Burke Development Incorporated, and Allen and his staff, or the community colleges, the public school systems, or, of course, our local governments, but of course, the COG as well. And so the COG appointed a 15-member board to oversee the development of this last November. It was a pretty diverse group of people, from all backgrounds, geography, age, employment background, race, ethnicity, and gender as well. I'll point out here as well, you know, we've talked a lot about losing that younger population from our region, and so our board thought it was particularly important to have younger people represented on the committee. And so as a result, 75% of the committee was under the age of 50, and half of the committee was under the age of 40. And it's pretty evenly split between male and female, and as I mentioned before, all four counties represented on the committee. On the back of the plan, I think each of you have paper copies of the plan, and I also have additional copies here tonight for anyone in attendance. They certainly are welcome to those. It can also be found on our website as well. You can see on the back of the plan, the diverse affiliations, professional affiliations of all the members of the SEDs committee. So why is it important? Well, we live in an era of economic transition, perhaps as much economic transition as we've seen since the beginning of the Industrial Revolution. Some of it good, some of it not so good. Our economy functions on a regional basis, and most, even though most, we think about political boundaries quite often, and I do as a former town manager and a county planning director, and I know all you do as well, and they're important, but our, on a daily basis, the average person or business really doesn't think about those political boundaries very often when they go about conducting their operations and their businesses. Some of the improvements are made on a regional basis, and some improvements benefit the entire region. I can't think of a finer example than the New School for Science and Math campus that's coming to Morganton. Yes, it's going to be great for Morganton, it's going to be great for Burke County, but it's going to be fantastic for the entire region as well. This map best illustrates why our economy functions on a regional basis. This shows the daily commuting patterns among our four counties. The larger the arrow, the larger direction, number of people are going in that direction each day. And so each day, 42% of our workforce gets up and works in a county different from the one in which they live. Four out of 10. That's pretty amazing if you think about that. That's a lot of people moving each day to further our economy. So the SEDs committee also used extensive public input. There's a few slides in here I'll skip over for time's sake tonight, but that is in the document as well. We received a tremendous response. Probably the highest response came from Burke County, actually, with almost 1,000 survey respondents. We had several open-ended questions and 5,000 to 6,000 open-ended responses, and I can say every one of those were read at least a couple of times, and that summary of that information was used by the committee throughout the plan and developing the document. So they started with a regional profile, understanding what's happening, the SEDs committee did, what's happening with our region, what are the trends, what are the things they need to be aware of to address in our region. And so we know about the population loss that we've experienced. You can see that middle circle there shows that we've seen actually a small population decline in our region, and Burke County actually had the largest decline in population over that five-year period of 2% from 2010 to 2015, with almost 1,800 people leaving. And then you can see that next circle on the right there, that shows our population projection for the next 20 years, from 2015 to 2035. And you can see it's 2.4% for the region and 1.2% growth for Burke County. That is not per year. That is 1.2% growth for the entire 20-year period. So that's not a good statistic. However, that's a projection. It takes current trends and extends them forward. It's not a prediction, and certainly many of our efforts that we're undertaking can positively improve that. And of course, new challenges can make that worse as well, so we have to be mindful of that. And what it means is that unless we are aggressive in our actions and continue to take efforts to improve our economy, things could get worse. And certainly, we've seen the job losses here. You see this, lost 40,000 manufacturing jobs, and that manufacturing line, I'll point out there, you see that it decreased from 34% to 28%. And you might say, okay, we've hit bottom, that's the worst behind us. Well, at one point, we were almost 60% of our employment was directly involved in manufacturing. And here's the point that I would say that why we shouldn't be complacent, is that the average community in the average region in the United States only has 9% directly employed in manufacturing. So what does that mean? Well, it means we're better off than a lot of communities because those jobs pay more. But it also means that we have a lot of ground that we could lose if we're not careful. So unemployment, you can see here, the green bars represent the size of our labor force, the number of people that are willing and able to be employed, and the blue bars on that chart show the number of people actually employed. You can see the number of people being employed has increased in recent years, and the labor force has been shrinking. That's not unique to our region, it's occurred throughout the country. But you can see, the closer those two bars get together, the lower the unemployment rate becomes, and you can see here, that trend also continues. We've seen real, at one point, we're close to 17% for the region unemployment. We're down now to around 4%, give or take a little bit each month, it fluctuates. But we've seen real improvement there. The first couple of years, that drop in unemployment was due to the labor force shrinking, but in the last two or three years, we've seen real increase in employment, and that's a positive trend. So the recommendations, there are 25 of them. I won't hit all of those tonight, I'll just hit a few. There are six categories they were divided into: economic development, workforce, infrastructure, housing, marketing, and community life. So economic development, you can see here, we've seen employment growth in the last four years, from 2012 to 16, of 5.7% for the Hickory-Lenore-Morganton MSA. That might be abbreviated Hickory MSA on some slides, but it's the same area, it's all four of our counties. And so we'll use these 15 metro areas, we get data on these 15 metro areas, and so it's a good way to benchmark ourselves and compare how things are happening. So we don't have explosive growth, as some of the large metros have, but we certainly have modest and significant growth over the last four years. At the same time, in recent years, our poverty rates have increased. They peaked in 2010, going from nine, just shy of 10% up to 16.7. I'll point out the under 18, all these categories, the poverty rate did decrease the last five years, but at one point, we were more than one in four of our children was below the poverty line in our region. And now it's improved a little bit, but it's still, one in five children are still below the poverty line in our region. And that's directly related to our job loss that we've experienced. So some of the recommendations, shell buildings was one of the things that came up quite a bit in our stakeholder interviews and among the committee discussion. One of our other counties in the region did a study last year. They employed a consultant, and that consultant said that 80% of their requests were for buildings that were between 50,000 and 100,000 square feet, that were at least shell buildings, meaning they have the walls up and the ceiling up, maybe still dirt or gravel floor, but it has the basic building in place. And we have almost no inventory available in our region with adequate ceiling heights. So this is an area where local governments are becoming more active with. There's public-private partnerships that can be undertaken, and the goal was, going forward for us as a region, to have one building ready, one under construction, and one in planning stages. That can be accomplished through the local government providing temporary loans, or a partnership or other incentives with private developers to build the buildings. Here's a couple examples that have occurred in our region recently, there in Catawba County and Alexander County, and they've worked out pretty well just in the last year or so. So that's something we're encouraging for all of our local governments to consider. We want to continue with building reuse and site development grants. Certainly, Morganton has been a leader in this area with a number of building reuse grants in recent years, and we're glad to partner with the city to do that. We also want to promote some of our regional assets. As I mentioned, the school of science and math is a regional asset. If you're not familiar with it, Manufacturing Solutions Center is another one, and Conover, and then, of course, App State and other colleges, universities have various offices and teaching centers within our region as well that are important. So workforce was the next category that they also looked at. Educational attainment still matters here. This slide shows you how much is obtained in terms of annual income by category of their educational attainment. Of course, no surprise, those with a graduate or master's degree or higher earn the most, and bachelors next. We do see a little bit of anomaly there, where some with some college or associate's degree actually make less than those with only a high school, but that's mainly, I think, due to the fact that baby boomers are at their end of their career, where their earning potential is usually highest, and they tend to have higher rates of only high school education, whereas our younger populations have at least some college education or an associate's degree. So, and they're at the beginning of their careers where their earning potential is less. So I think those numbers reverse over time. Also, that some college or associate's degree category includes folks that may not have finished college, so that is also a factor. So we want to continue working with our K-12 institutions and aligning those career pathways what may have been called vocational training years past. Certainly, it's come full circle. Not all jobs need a four-year degree, nor should they want to have a four-year degree for every career. There's good, solid-paying careers without a four-year degree, and we have many great training opportunities through Western Piedmont Community College and our other community colleges in our region. So we also want to make sure we share data with our businesses so they know whether or not they're competitive with the wages they're offering. Not that we want to tell them what they ought to compensate their employees, but just put the information in their hands so they can take and compete in what is a global market based often for many of our products. So infrastructure also greatly influences our economic development efforts in the region. We are blessed to have a very strong status of economic, or, excuse me, infrastructure within our region. Morganton has strong infrastructure, many of our local governments do. It's a real asset we have, and we continue to try to work on those expansions and improvements. Certainly, that's a good part of what our COG staff spends its time with, working with Morganton and other local governments and Burke Development. Last year, we were able to get 30 different projects funded with $10 million in grant funding, $75 million in private investment leveraged, and almost 300 jobs assisted in the creation of those projects. And I'll point out that even though we were able to obtain $10 million in grants for our local governments, we probably wrote $30 million worth of grants because it's such a competitive environment. So transit, I know that's been a discussion here, I won't go into depth there, but certainly the information and indicators are that companies throughout North America are looking for public transportation when they look at communities and whether they are evaluating to come to your area. And so the consideration of public transit and expanding fixed route transit certainly is an asset that we should build on for our region. We also try to be smart about how we rank our transportation projects. There's very little politics in how DOT ranks or decides which projects to fund these days. It's all data-driven, based on congestion, safety, cost, and so we try to be smart about the way we put those together so that those factors score well, because we're competing statewide for those dollars. Broadband came up quite a bit as well, and of course, housing has been a discussion point in all of our counties in our region. A healthy housing market is necessary for us to retain and attract talent, and having that talent is necessary for retaining and attracting business. You can see here, over the last few years, the percentage of homeowner-occupied housing has decreased from about 69% down to 60%, while at the same time, the number of vacant housing units has nearly doubled for our region, from 7.5% to 13.7%. This next slide shows a few stats. You can see of those vacant housing units, about 11, well, about half of them are for sale or for rent, are seasonal homes. When you say seasonal homes, what are those? Well, homes on the lake, homes in the mountains that are not occupied year-round, and then about 11,000 of those vacant homes in our region are just sitting there for one reason or another. And that's the problem that we have to look at, particularly when you look at the other two circles on that slide there. Of those 15 metro areas, when you consider the age of our housing stock, we have the highest percentage of homes, with almost exactly half of our homes constructed before 1980, and the fewest percentage of homes constructed since the year 2000. That probably doesn't surprise us with the job loss that we've experienced. Well, why is the age important? Well, not all homes constructed prior to 1980 are a problem. We have great historic homes, and certainly a good part of our housing stock is well-maintained. But we know, once a home gets past 40 years, there's a strong correlation between the maintenance issues of our lower end of our housing stock and the blight that occurs, and that decreases property values. We know there's a correlation between crime rates when you get concentrations of that blight, so we know that code enforcement and other remedies are going to be more and more prevalent for our local governments in our region. It's not unique to our region, it's been experienced at greater length, at greater amounts in other areas. Certainly, one thinks of Detroit and places like that that have probably the most egregious examples, but it's something we're going to have to continue working on. As such, our board appointed a, or put together and sanctioned a regional vacant and substandard housing task force for local government staff to get together and exchange information and come up with strategies. They'll be meeting again later this week for the third time to try to figure out what we can do about that. Also, new market rate housing is important to develop, especially within and near our downtowns. You've had some good examples over the last few weeks, actually, but over the recent years, you've had good projects with downtown housing here in Morganton. And of course, affordable housing is always a constant issue, and we try to leverage the resources that we have, state and federal resources, to provide as much affordable housing as we can. So marketing, this subject probably got the most discussion amongst our stakeholders, our SEDs committee members, and our public input. And we know that we're losing some of that younger population, but you ask, well, how much? Well, look at this chart. Of those 15 metro areas, from the year 2000 to 2015, we saw a 22.5% decrease in that population. That is by far the largest decrease in the state of the 15 metro areas. It's not where you want to be. Of course, you see large growth in Asheville and Charlotte and Wilmington. You see there Jacksonville had the largest, probably, I want, you know, what we, people might say, well, what is that about? Well, that's military. Camp Lejeune, that's probably related to their deployment patterns and troops being brought back home over the recent years, their large increases. So this is something that we have to turn around and focus on appealing to the younger population, because that is the impact, that will impact our population projection. If we don't reverse that younger population numbers, then what do we see? The things that we're seeing now, decreased student populations in our schools, and lower populations in those age cohorts means fewer workers. populations in those age cohorts means fewer workers in the coming years, and that makes a shortage for our businesses to be able to hire and retain the workforce they need to keep operating. And so we don't want to be in a place where businesses start leaving because we don't have the requisite number of workforce here. And so the recommendations here are to convene a regional marketing task force. We want to develop a regional approach to marketing. We don't want to take away anyone's, any community's individual identity, but the reality is this: if you live here in Morganton and you love being outdoors, you count it as an asset that you're here and you're close to the mountains, or that you have these great greenways here in Morganton, or that you see a festival in Lenore or Hickory, and vice versa. If you're living in Lenore, you see the great things that are going on here. The point is this, is that the assets that we have as a region are greater than our individual communities, and so we ought to claim those when we're marketing our individual communities and marketing ourselves as a region, because we really have four groups that we ought to be considering. We always think about the prospective businesses and the prospective residents, you know, but we don't think about our existing businesses and our existing residents. And part of that is we've got a negative narrative out there among our existing businesses and residents about our region, and we need to reverse that because we have a lot of great things here in our region and in here in Morganton, and we need to make sure they're aware of those great assets we have and reverse that opinion out there. So we want to make sure that there's many opportunities for all people in all economic status or levels. We want to keep focusing on downtown revitalization. Certainly, Morganton has been a leader for decades on downtown revitalization. It's a, you have a tremendous asset with downtown Morganton. Our other towns, we have some great downtowns also in the region, and we have quite a few things that we can keep pushing forward on and making more improvements with our downtowns because that is the front door when we're trying to recruit new residents and new businesses. It's the first impression that people, they have of our towns and our counties, is what do they think of our downtowns? If they're not healthy, then that's going to say a lot about our communities, whether they think our communities are in a healthy and economically good state. We also want to accommodate younger and senior adults. Right now, we're the most diverse our region has ever been, with eighty-seven percent white, seven percent African-American, and Hispanic, and three point two percent Asian. I'll point out that very soon, the Hispanic population will become the largest minority group in our region. If it hasn't already, it'll probably in the next year or two is worth of data once it's released. At the same time, we're seeing huge increases in our older population. You see here a fifty-six percent increase from the year two thousand to two thousand fifteen for those sixty-five to seventy-four, a thirty percent increase from those seventy-five to eighty-four, and a forty-four percent eighty-five-plus increase. And so that's positive. It means we have retirees with talent and experience and time that they can contribute to our communities. It also means demands on local government services, EMS, our senior centers, our medical facilities, all have greater weight placed on them in meeting those needs and demands. So it's both a positive and a challenge that we have to address. So we have to think about that with our cultivating our next generation of community leaders. There was a lot of discussion about baby boomers retiring, and we know that in the next few years, we are already starting to experience turnover with our elected officials and our other community leaders as they retire from public life, and we have, and so the question is asked, what are we doing to cultivate those next leaders? Are we grooming those folks? Are we actively engaging in succession planning, whether it's an elective position or an appointed position? We have to be intentional about that, because there's going to be a great amount of institutional knowledge lost and relationships that have been maintained over decades that if we're not intentional about maintaining, those will be lost when the turnover continues to occur. So again, robust downtowns came up quite a bit, and of course, healthy living initiatives with recreation. And while this wasn't a public health or justice study, criminal justice study, they did feel like it was important to acknowledge the opioid and illicit drug epidemic that we have here in our region. It's not the worst in the country, but it is worse than most, and it does have an economic impact. So I appreciate your time. I'd be glad to answer any questions the council has at this time.
Anthony, can the public get a copy of this online? Is that available?
Yes, yes. It's on our website at WPCOG.org. That's Western Piedmont Council of Governments. WPCOG.org is online there, and they can obtain that and all the background information and reports that came along with the report.
Any council have questions for Anthony? Great presentation.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate your support and your partnership with the city.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda are public advocacy, our upcoming events at Comma, Charlie Brown Christmas Live on December the fourteenth. I believe Dr. Jim Smith said that is sold out currently. Messiah Sing Along is at First Baptist Church on December nineteenth at seven thirty. The Susify Morganton, which is the downtown Christmas parade, Tuesday, December the fifth, six o'clock. We're promised it won't rain until after that parade. The Holiday Farmers Market on Saturday, December the ninth, from ten to two. We're going to Susify Morganton to shop late downtown event, which is Friday, December the fifteenth, from four to seven. And the Holiday Carriage Rides and Santa visits continue Friday and Saturday evenings in town. I would like to caution all our drivers not to hit the horses as the carriage goes around the community, the courthouse. I would like to thank the staff for the decorations at City Hall and also our electric department, especially for our lights downtown. They've done a great job, and I think it really looks nice. Next on the agenda, Sally?
The Christmas parade is rain or shine, because if we cancel, we don't get to have it. So rain or shine. But the mayor's promised no rain, and because we've had so many questions, Yanni's is now open. You can go eat tomorrow. Or tonight, if you want to go tonight.
Thank you. Next is consideration to change a city council meeting, Sally?
Yes. January first would be our normal city council meeting, but that's a holiday. Asking you to consider moving that from the first to January eighth.
To have a motion?
Motion to change the city council meeting date from January first, two thousand eighteen to January eighth, two thousand eighteen.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next is the municipal power agency number one update, Sally?
Nothing at this time.
Next on the agenda is consent agenda, and I believe we have six items, Sally?
We do. Six items that we would ask you to consider approving in one motion, unless somebody wants something pulled off and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, that includes minutes from the November sixth council meeting, tax releases in the amount of three hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents, three budget amendments, one to receive fifteen thousand dollars from the Optimist Club for the skate park construction, one to receive five thousand dollars from Electricities for lighting at the skate park, and one to receive a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars from Duke Energy for the construction of the boat launch near the water treatment plant. And that's when the project's funded in the FERC process. And finally, the second and final reading of taxi cab franchises, approving three of those for Michael Gilbert, Larry Seegers, and Claudia Morales.
Any council members wish to have anything taken off the consent agenda? Not to have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Over approve the consent agenda.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Under public hearings, we need to have a public hearing for consideration of an economic development grant agreement for Project Quantum Leap. I'm going to ask Louis.
Well, I can do it.
So we have been working with Burke County and BDI, considering a opportunity for a new manufacturing facility in Morganton and Burke County. Alan Wood with BDI is here with us tonight and available to answer questions. We are looking at this, it's called Project Quantum Leap, a secret code name. We can't tell you the real name, because we have to follow the right process in order to be able to do these. Looking at a company that is going to repurpose an existing building, a vacant building. You heard Anthony talk about the building reuse grant and being able to get some folks into our existing facilities that we've had that have been vacant. We have been very successful with that in Burke County, and that is something that has been strong for us. This is an investment of about eighteen million dollars in new plant and equipment, looking to create a hundred and two new full-time jobs over a four-year period. The economic development incentive that you would be considering would be based on the new tax value that would be created by this investment. We would be looking at an incentive equal to fifty percent of the new taxable investment over a seven-year period. We have had this properly advertised, and Alan is here if we have further questions.
Called to order a public hearing concerning the economic development incentives for Project Quantum Leap. Would anybody like to speak at the public hearing? Public hearing is now closed. You've heard the discussion concerning this development incentives agreement. To have a motion?
Motion to approve and enter into an economic development grant agreement with Project Quantum Leap and authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute all necessary documentation.
I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Second, my Wendy. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next on our agenda is consideration of award of a contract for the recreation splash pad, Sally?
As you are aware, we have been working on a renovation project at the Martin Luther King Junior Park over near Mountain View Recreation Center for some time. This has been an ongoing process. We have been in the design phase. One of the key components of the newly renovated park is going to be a splash pad. It's going to be very similar to the one at Martha's Park. We have sought proposals for this. We talked with three contractors, received proposals, and are asking you to award a contract to CMI to construct the splash pad at an amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand dollars. This money is approved in our current year's capital budget, and just a reminder, the funding for this park renovation was provided by Kate B. Reynolds and also the Morgan and Recreation Foundation.
What's the wishes of council?
I'd like to make a motion to award a contract to CMI for construction of a splash pad at the Martin Luther King Junior Park, not to exceed ninety-five thousand.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
And just note that the final form of the contract is still being worked on, which will be prepared for you as soon as possible.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes.
And there will be other improvements to that project coming before you in the coming
I did close the public hearing, didn't I?
Yes.
Okay, just checking. Make sure I do it right. Next is consideration of sale of two vacant lots on Roper Street. I'll call on our city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city, for many years now, has owned a couple of small adjoining vacant lots that front, between Roper Street and Roper Alley, actually, together totaling less than a quarter of an acre. The city has no real use for them at all, and certainly no plans to use them. We have received an offer to purchase those properties from Irvin Circle K Enterprises, which is one of Mike Irvin's businesses, and he has offered, well, we have negotiated an offer of five thousand dollars for those properties. That is slightly less than the assessed property tax value. However, I don't think anyone really thinks that the property tax value is necessarily accurate, first of all, because it's non-taxable property in the hands of the city, of course, and secondly, because it's such a small tract. The offer, Mr. Irvin would plan to build at least one residential unit on these properties. If you wish to approve this sale, then you'll follow the usual procedure, which is you would tentatively approve the sale and the proposed contract with Irvin Circle K. We would then advertise it in the News Herald, ten days for an upset bid, and if there's no upset bid, then that sale would become final. If there's an upset bid, then you'd follow the process just the way you do in other court-approved sales. But first, you would need to adopt a resolution declaring this as surplus property.
Council, I believe we have three motions concerning this particular action, so I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution declaring as surplus public property those two lots located at two oh nine Roper Alley, described indeed recorded in book eight fifty-one, page six fifty, in the Burke County Registry, and two eleven Roper Alley, described indeed recorded in book eight thirty-five, page eight forty-seven, in the Burke County Registry.
I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We need a second motion, please.
Motion to approve the contract for sale of real property to Irvin Circle K Enterprises LLC for five thousand dollars.
I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. We have a third motion.
Motion to direct the city attorney to advertise the two vacant lots for upset bids in accordance with general statute section one sixty-eight dash two sixty-nine, and if no upset bids are received, then to carry out the terms of that contract for sale of the two lots to Irvin Circle K Enterprises LLC. Or if upset bids are received, then to sell the property to the highest bidder and further authorize the mayor and the clerk to execute any deed or other necessary documents.
I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is consideration of appointments to boards and commission. I believe I have one on the Cable Television Commission, Sally?
We have, one member of that commission has recently passed away, and so we announced a thirty-day vacancy. You have received an application that was included in your packet. Dorian Palmer is interested in serving on that board if you so wish.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to appoint Dorian Palmer to the Cable Commission to fulfill a vacant term which will expire June the first, two thousand and eighteen.
I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Do you have an add-on tonight for consideration?
We have another vacancy.
We have a thirty-day notice.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. We can do it that way. Thirty-day notice of vacancies for boards and commissions. We have the Fireman's Relief Fund. Karen Dunkin is appointed to this board by the city council. Captain John Campbell is appointed by Public Safety and confirmed by council. Both of these members are in good standing and are willing to continue serving on the board. I don't think we have to take any council action, correct?
You don't. You can wait and do that next time, or if you choose to go ahead and reappoint, you can do that and...
I'll entertain a motion to appoint my councilman Fleming to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The handout is the purpose sheet that was handed out early is consideration for calling for a public hearing to consider economic development incentives for project engines. Sally?
Yes. This morning, Alan, who is still here to answer any questions, called to let us know that we have a second economic development project that we are in process with and looking to upfit and repurpose another vacant building that we have, codename Project Engines, looking for a ten to twelve million dollar capital investment and hiring of a hundred and eighty-five to two hundred employees. In order to consider an incentive, we would need to call for a public hearing. We would ask that you consider calling for that at our January eighth, since we moved our meeting to the eighth, the January eighth city council meeting.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to call for a public hearing at the January eighth, two thousand and eighteen city council meeting to consider economic development incentives for project engines.
I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
We're going to put some of those eleven thousand people that leave Burke County every day to work back to work here.
These are nice things.
Okay, let's see. I had something else. I think that is all we had for council official action. Does, do any other council have anything they'd like to add? Welcome again, Chris Hawkins of Windicata. I would like to say Merry Christmas from city council and the staff, and have a safe holiday season and a happy new year. We are adjourned.